How are you guys?
Good.
Yes, doing well, doing well. Check in, thanks for helping. It's on me, Jim. You're listening. All right. Good. All right, I'm already seated. Yeah, we got it here.
Yes, ma'am. We get that changed.
Everything is changed.
Okay, everything is changed.
I just make sure.
Just make sure, chair and all.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, wait, let me jump, actually. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for joining us tonight for our Monday, January 8th regular session of the Durham County Board of Commissioners. I will start us off by reading the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and citizens to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow citizens. At any time, should any member of the board or any citizen fail to observe this public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. As a courtesy to others, please remember to turn off your cell phones during the meeting so we don't have any noise disturbances. I will ask Commissioner Carter if you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Carter. Do we have any agenda adjustments from the board? Okay, seeing none. I will move on to our announcements. And I'll pass it on to the clerk.
Good evening, everyone. I'll read the announcements that are published in tonight's agenda. They're also on our county website. The Durham County Justice Resources Department is hosting a resource fair on Wednesday, January 10th from 1:30 PM to 4:30 PM at 326 East Main Street. The fair will feature employment opportunities, vocational training and education information as well as supportive services for justice-involved residents. There will be several local employers to meet with and possibly interview potential employees. Durham County Transportation Staff wants your feedback. The public comment period for Q3 amendments to the FY24 Durham Transit Work Plan is open until Thursday, January 11th. For additional information on the proposed amendments, please visit the transportation website. There is a link there. And if you would like to submit public comments, you can send them to, it's an email address. It's transitplan@dconc.gov. Most Durham County government offices will be closed for the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday on Monday, January 15th. Our offices will reopen with normal business hours on Tuesday, January 16th. To read how the holiday will impact certain services and programs, please visit www.dconc.gov. The Museum of Life and Science is releasing a survey to gauge interest in a shuttle service that would be operating in partnership with Durham County during the museum's Free Community Days. We will be looking at a model that best services the needs of those interested. The deadline to complete the survey is Monday, January 15th, and there is a link for that survey as well. The United States Citizens and Immigrant Services, Cherokee Federal, NC State Refugee Coordinators Office, the Office of Refugee Settlement and local service providers invite you to an Afghan Support Center at the Durham Convention Center. This is, this no-cost event will provide an opportunity for Afghans to talk to staff from U.S., North Carolina State and government agencies, a variety of service providers and others to assist in making sure you have what you need to successfully make the United States your home. Event will be held from Wednesday, will be held Wednesday, January 17th to Saturday, January 20th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's Wednesday again, I'm sorry, Wednesday through Friday will be from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Saturday at the Convention Center Grand Ballroom located at 301 West Morgan Street. Interpretation will also be provided. Please contact Keku Nau at K-N-A-Y-U at dco, dconc.gov, excuse me. You can also visit their website, www.centersforafghansupport.org for more information. The Durham County Library invites everyone to a one-hour session where you will learn all there is to know about renewing your DACA. Our special guest is Attorney Riza Oza from the Brown Immigration Law. She will be answering questions to any concerns that you have. The session is Monday, January 22nd from 12:00 to 1:00 PM at the Durham County Library located at 300 North Roxboro Street. You must register for this event, and there is a link for registration. Start off 2024 the healthy way by getting your updated COVID-19 vaccine and flu shot and pick up your free COVID-19 test at the Durham County Department of Public Health located at 414 East Main Street. COVID vaccines are available by appointment only, while flu shots can be appointments or walk-ins. You can schedule your vaccine by calling 560-7658 as well as your flu shots by calling 560-7608. For additional information, please visit dcopublichealth.org. That concludes the announcements published in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Cora Corales. I want to ask the board members if there's any other announcements. Vice Chair Burns?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have two really quick ones. One, I'm gonna kick to somebody else because I'm not gonna do it justice. But the first one, as many of you all know, the North Carolina Soil and Water District Association is holding their conference in Durham. I got to be with them some this weekend. They're here today and tomorrow. So we don't have anybody from staff here. But I did at least want to announce, I don't know if you all know, but we got Technical District of the Year here in Durham. So Eddie's not here because he's, he's out there being a gracious host and welcoming in these 500 individuals and all the other Soil and Water District supervisors. But we have been invited tomorrow. They get awarded it at 10:30 tomorrow. So if anybody's available, we will get that additionally. Two of our teachers here in Durham actually got Teacher of the Year. So I know it's, I didn't find out all this until this weekend, but award-winning. Also, somebody got reaccredited this weekend. And if I could, Madam Chair, with your permission, and there are some events I want to talk about for MLK, but I see we have some folks here from the MLK Subcommittee. So I know we do their resolution, they'll announce them, so I won't belabor that. But I think congratulations are in order for the sheriff as he got to jail, reaccredited this weekend.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Burns. Good news travels fast. My team and I spent the last four days in Maryland where we met with commissioners for the American Correctional Association, or ACA, because we were up for reaccreditation in our three-year audit period. And we were successful. And I'm, I'm a little bit shy to say we, we got 100 out of 100 compliance with our standards, which is obviously the highest you can get. And in our conversation with the commissioners there, they applauded the effort and the professionalism in all of our programming that we continue to offer in our detention facility. And we talked extensively about our MAT program and our educational program. So thank you for the recognition. You'll be getting a copy of our certificate in the, in the next couple of weeks so that we can formally put it into the, to the minutes. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff Burkhead and Vice Chair Burns. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and great news to hear that, Sheriff. I just wanted to share a reminder, it wasn't in our announcements, but about the property tax relief programs that we have available to residents this time of year because the filings were due on Friday, this January 5th. But it's, I think it's important. I see our tax administrator here with us tonight to remind people about the resources that we have. So locally, we have the low-income homeowner relief grant program to help residents, low-income and fixed-income residents. And then there are state programs, the elderly-disabled homestead exemption, the circuit breaker for elderly and disabled deferment program, and the disabled veterans exclusion program. There is information about all of them on the Tax Department website. And our staff are there and ready also to help people with information about the programs and how to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Can you over here? Okay. That concludes all of our announcements. I will now move us on to our minutes and asking the board for approval of the November 27th, 2023 regular session minutes as well as the December 4th, 2023 work session minutes. Other? Moved by Commissioner Howerton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the minutes passes five to zero. That moves us over to our ceremonial items. The first item that we have today will be the introduction of the new Durham County Early Childhood Coordinator, Maytal Barak. I see Donna and Maytal joining us.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm very excited to be here with you tonight. I'm Donna Reewalt. I'm the Durham County Cooperative Extension Director. I have the pleasure of supporting the county early childhood coordinator role in our department. You all may well remember in 2019 when you, along with county leadership, established the early childhood coordinator to help us really do a better job driving county and community-wide efforts for early childhood initiatives and practices in Durham County, particularly with leadership for the Durham County involvement and the Early Childhood Action Plan and certainly our more than $6 million investment in Durham Pre-K, along with many other initiatives and programs. We've been really blessed to have collaborative leadership in this role, and I'm really excited to say that we also found that in Maytal Barak, who is our new county early childhood coordinator. I'm really excited about Maytal's leadership for several reasons. I think one of the most important ones is that she has the breadth of experience of both being in a classroom as an early childhood teacher, being a researcher as well. She's also been a nonprofit administrative leader where she helped lead and develop a program called Book Babies at Book Harvest. Some of you may know that program. I had the fortune of also knowing that program really well because we collaborate very closely with Book Babies at Cooperative Extension through our parent advocacy work. I think the other things, I mean, there's so much to say that I could say about Maytal. I'll let her talk in just a second. But she's definitely committed to children and families, and that has shined throughout her entire career. She, she lives and works in Durham. She believes in this community and cares for this community, has demonstrated that at every step, certainly every step in which I've seen her work in this community. I think it's a blessing that we have someone in this role who is already known and has been involved in our Early Childhood Action Plan and the ground in Durham work that we're so committed to. She is also, she also has a MED in Early Intervention and Family Support from the University of North Carolina. And she has a wonderful family who also live here with her. And I want her to tell a little bit more about her work and excitement about this role, and then if you all have any questions.
Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to be here today and join you during this time. To speak a little bit about myself, thank you, Donna. That was very generous. I think the big thing I want to share is my passion and belief in early childhood. I truly think and have learned with families along my career that everything starts the moment those babies are born, and we need to be committed to being the village around those children and their families. We live in an amazing county with wonderful resources and programs. We need to continue to ensure that families, all families of all children have access to these resources, starting at birth, continuing with a clear streamline until they are done with school. And I'm here for that. I love the collaboration that I've seen in this county, particularly in the past few years, as Donna mentioned, with the Early Childhood Action Plan. And I look forward to continuing that work and continue to learn with families about their priorities for their children as we see the wonderful growth of our community.
Thank you so much, Maytal. It's so great to welcome you to the team. I know from, I can speak on behalf of this entire board, but not just our board, senior leadership, all staff in Durham County, that, you know, our children are a great priority to all of the work that we do. So to have someone like you filling this role, got a chance to read the bio that we have in the agenda, it's really, really impressive. And I'm so glad that we were able to bring you to the county. So thank you for joining us. Thank you, Donna, for the intentionality with the hiring also of bringing people from the, within the community who already have relationships with key partners. I want to pass it to any of my colleagues who would like to also? Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. Well, I'm so excited. Welcome, Maytal. And we are so lucky to have you joining us with all of your experience, knowledge, skills, and leadership on this very, very important issue. I don't think I could articulate it any better than you just did about why the work that you will be helping us with and leading is so very important for our community. Thank you.
Vice Chair Burns, then we'll start.
Mine is really quick. One, I, you know, I, I join my colleagues in their statements, but I also want to throw out there, even in reading your bio, I always think it's, it's good to have, you know, new ideas. And I feel like from what I read and also from what I've heard in the community, you're gonna bring a really fresh perspective to this role. And that's always good, especially as we embark out on some of these new and innovative ideas that like not just this board has, but other folks have. So I look forward to seeing what you bring forth and how we help our kids. If for no other reason, you know, we sat down with our early childhood coordinator. Kate did a lot of work, right? Like, we can't sit here like this. I have notebooks. I have notebooks. So she left a roadmap. And we're not necessarily saying that you have to follow it, but I, I look forward to seeing you chart your own path so that these babies don't have to worry about how they're gonna read, where they're gonna eat, and mommy doesn't have to worry about how this kid is being treated. So thank you for wanting to get up here. I'm gonna tell you like I tell everybody else, welcome to the greatest show on earth. It never ends.
Yes, I also want to welcome you, Maytal, and say that I think that one of the most important decisions that I've been part of on this board was the development of this position, the early childhood coordinator. And I just, I felt goosebumps when Donna was describing you and your work and your passion and your background, and also with the things that you said. And I look forward to seeing how you continue to drive our Early Childhood Action Plan forward. We've got the great plan. We need to be sure we're doing everything we can to implement it and being, putting resources behind that. Thank you for prioritizing the families, you know, both generations, the children. But I consider this our most important work as a county, investing in the early childhood years. If we don't invest them, we, we lose our chance. And everybody knows that. We all know about the brain development that happens early on. And we, we need to invest more there. And I'm so glad we have you helping lead the way with this work.
I will just add my kudos as well. Welcome, and children are our future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maytal, and welcome again to the team. We're so excited to have you. That moves us on to our next proclamation for National Mentoring Month. And I'll actually pass this one. Commissioner Carter, if you'd like to read this one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Durham Board of County Commissioners proclamation, whereas created in 2002 by the Harvard School of Public Health and mentor, the National Mentoring Partnership, January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for quality, consistent, and competent mentors. And whereas, a mentor is a caring, dependable, and authentic person that provides support, guidance, advice, assistance, and devotes time to a young person to help youth discover personal strength, to persevere and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship on a regular basis. And whereas, quality mentoring encourages and empowers youth to make positive choices, promote self-esteem and character development, support academic achievement, social-emotional learning, leadership and professional development, college readiness and career exploration. And whereas, the goals of National Mentoring Month are to raise awareness of mentoring, recruit individuals to mentor, equip mentors with the skills needed to support youth, encourage organizations to engage and integrate quality mentoring into their efforts, and efforts with a focus on academic support, life skills, training, and career readiness, workforce preparation to motivate youth to excel. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for youth and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring mentoring relationships continue to prevent social disconnection and mitigate learning loss. And whereas, research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy and absenteeism, scholastic efficacy and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support. And whereas, mentors serve a critical role in helping youth successfully complete high school and gate admission to college or training programs, earn a post-secondary credential or certification, build new in-demand skills, prepare for the future of work, and succeed in an ever-changing workforce. And whereas, mentoring programs must incorporate work-based learning to prepare and connect youth with real-life work experiences where they can apply academic, technical, and soft skills and develop their employability while exploring career pathways. And whereas, the Durham County Strategic Plan Goal One is to provide access to educational, vocational, economic, and cultural opportunities while empowering citizens to choose pathways for their own success. Whereas, the Durham Board of County Commissioners supports community-based mentoring programs as key community partners to support our mission for a safe, healthy, and vibrant community. And whereas, National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring and recruit caring adult mentors in Durham County. Now, therefore, I, nina alam, on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as National Mentoring Month and call upon elected officials, educators, business, and community leaders and citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremony. this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Two, recognize the valuable contributions of staff and volunteers in quality mentoring programs that empower youth, enabling them to discover inner strength and realize their full potential. Acknowledge the manifold benefits of mentoring, including fostering healthy identity development, promoting educational achievement, reducing juvenile delinquency, enhancing career readiness, improving life skills and outcomes, and fortifying communities. Advocate for the establishment, expansion, sustainability, and funding of quality mentoring programs throughout Durham, aiming to provide youth with the necessary tools for leading healthy, productive, and meaningful lives. Support initiatives aimed at bridging academic achievement, opportunity, and mentoring gaps, emphasizing critical mentoring to assist boys of color. This involves pairing them with mentors who grasp and comprehend social, political, and economic racism and oppression, and are committed to acting against these elements of society. This the eighth day of January 2024.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. I'd like to call up DeWorren Langley to provide any comments for this item.
Thank you. And I would also like other youth and mentoring organizations that are present to please come forth. Happy New Year to you all, commissioners. I do, every year when I do this, I always ask other organizations that are available to come and share about their organizations as well, because there are a lot of great organizations that are doing work in this community. And one of the things that I know from my own lived experience is that not every organization can reach every kid. And because of the diversity that exists in our community, we need to have a wealth of resources that are available to meet the needs of our young people. And so first, I would like to thank you all for this proclamation. This is the, I think it's the ninth year that I've come and done this. But I serve as the volunteer executive director of the Charles Hamilton Houston Foundation, and we take pride in the work that we do with boys and young men of color. We have a program that this year is turning five years old, the Young Men of Action Program, that work with boys in middle and high school. And then we have our Career Pathway Program, which works with young men eighteen to twenty-five. And those young men complete that program, entering into career-oriented professions, earning on average $66,000 a year. That is how you transform lives. That is how you impact boys and young men of color. So I would like other organizations that are present to come forth and share briefly. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. My name is Denise Burgos. I am representing here El Centro Hispano. El Centro Hispano works to strengthen the community, build bridges, and advocate for equity and inclusion. I am the community specialist for the youth program, Jóvenes Líderes en Acción. It's a youth leadership program that works, is a community-based program designed to create opportunities for Latin youth to grow and thrive with the purpose of developing leadership through personal growth, academic excellence, and advocacy. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for the proclamation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fred Evans. I'm the director and head football coach for the Bull City Bulldogs. We want to be known so, for so much more than just athletics that we have in it. We bring kids in, we try to teach them love of self, love of family, and love of community. And they can start to learn that, once they take that love from themselves, they can move it on to others in the community as well. And we're trying, we have an everyday fight for what we know. We got a, we got a problem with gangs and the shootings here, so when you see this in the area, you'll know that it's someone out there fighting for the kids, to get them to stop this violence. It's senseless, and we got to take the normalcy out of it. But as far as for 2024, we're trying, now we're trying to get the kids involved in different aspects of feeding elderly, feeding the homeless, so they can see how fortunate they are, you know? Even though you, you could feel like you're unfortunate, but when you see people who really are, then you become to realize that I have to be grateful for what I have. So that's our, right now, that's our biggest thing, and we're putting forth an effort to try to get funds to become a food bank for kids, for eating after school, you know? Even though some kids don't really have a lot to eat, period, but, you know, we can help with after school and then also get them outreach for food, you know, after school, and help with homework and things like that. We're going to continue to push that effort. So although we don't want to be known as the Athletic Association, I do have to say, we just, we just won the six U state championship this year, and I wanted to shout that out. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Jaman Williams. I'm representing on, on the behalf of Wall Street Juniors. We're an organization started in Atlanta, but also have a chapter here in Durham, where we focus mainly on increasing the financial literacy of not just youth, but of people of all ages. We have multiple programs, and we just love to increase the economic positivity in Durham. We like to really help, we like to consider people not really underfunded, but underestimated communities. That's what we like to try to push onto our constituents and friends who would like to join us. We also have a community wealth building program, and it's more of an intergenerational event for all ages. You know, we want to bring people to an intimate space so we can talk about these things and, you know, tear away these veils of, you know, financial literacy that, you know, a lot of people tend to ignore, or they don't want to pass down these things to the younger people around them. And we just really like to push for this, not just economic change, but behavioral change, because that's what leads to long-term change in youth and adults. This past year has been a really big year for us. We've done a lot of backpacking drives, we've done food drives as well. This summer was our first time hosting a summer camp here in Durham. I don't know if there are any natives around, but if you ever heard of the Seeds Garden here in Durham, yes, that's where we were located this past summer. It was a really great experience for our youth, you know, teaching them in the garden, teaching them life skills, teaching them money skills. It was a very frugal endeavor for us. And then at the end of the summer, we also had the kids do their own little pop-up shop to really put them on the entrepreneurial path that, you know, everyone needs to start. So yes, we're just an organization focused on financial literacy from, literally from ages two to 200. So as I say, anybody who would like to come and learn or about taxes, money, financials, anything like that, Wall Street Juniors has got your back. So thank you all again.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bree Elsie. I'm the executive director of Inspiring Minds. We are an after-school and summer program at Hillside High School here in Durham. We offer mentoring, homework help, tutoring, ACT/SAT preparation. We, everything that we do is tied to our five pillars, which is exposure to new experiences, which I think is the dopest part of our program, but career readiness, education, health and wellness, personal development, and then again, the exposure to new experiences. We do get our students out of the classroom and show them dope black professionals doing dope things so they can learn what they do, learn their story and how they got there, and then begin to believe that they too can achieve greatness. So we do a lot of industry tours, we do cultural tours, we do exposure tours. Last year, we took kids to Costa Rica. The year before that, we went to South Carolina and did a Golda Gichi tour. This year, our goal is to take our seniors to Africa. So we are here, we're in the community, we're raising money, we need volunteers, we need mentors, we need tutors. So if you are interested, find us at www.iamyouth.org. Thank you.
I'm going to sign off. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the board, and good evening to, appreciate you, Mr. Langley, for allowing me to come. Of course, you all know I represent MBK here in Durham, and I'm just excited about the opportunity. I wanted to come in to hear what was going on in Durham, in particular, what was going on in Durham mentoring for our Black and Brown boys, and I was excited, and I was appreciative of the invite. Of course, you all know, we are building the table with MBK Durham to bring everybody to the table who's doing some, some great things when it comes to the lives of Black and Brown boys. And our goal is to have population impact. So that's why we want to find anybody who's doing it. We want to get everybody to the table, and we really want to see what can we do to knock out some of these barriers for our young men. And once again, this is going to be a great year, and we're excited about what's transpiring, and I hope that y'all are ready.
Thank you all so much. It is so amazing to hear all of the different ways our neighbors are stepping up and volunteering to support and lead our youth. Thank you, DeWorren, for consistently bringing this item to us and giving us the opportunity to hear and highlight so many of the amazing organizations. I want to see if any of my colleagues, Vice Chair Burns?
I'm going to do what I always do. The only thing I hate is that what more people ain't here? Because missed the door, all I heard was, that brother that got the new tax repairs? Those your next future employees, so you link up with him. I'm serious. But I think that's what I always, I really wish sometimes our meetings were, had, had more, more public participation outside of it being contentious, because this brother says, yes, you know, I, we have a football team and we want, but we want to do other things. And so Mary's not here, but we want to add you. If you end up getting a food bank and get what you need, we have a grant out there for that, that we open up every year, and then you can get added to the social network. So maybe somebody doesn't have to take a bus across town because you're going to have your pop-up next door. So the interconnectivity that you all add, I just hope that we can, if, if somebody on staff saw somebody that says something that was inspiring, and that's my way of saying, I'll be emailing you all tomorrow because I heard something inspiring. I'm hopeful that we can make those connections before we leave here. You know, they say services are what we pay to be on this earth, but I just want to say thank you all for getting up every day and for some of y'all actually doing this for free. And as always, also to you, Mr. Langley, thank you for inviting them here and giving them an opportunity to showcase just how much they do for our community, and I say thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobs?
I just wanted to echo the thanks. I, most of you who shared tonight, that I have not even, I'm not, I wasn't even aware of the amazing work that you're doing, and so we do need to do a better job of supporting each other. And I hope that you all are connected to the city-county office on youth that also has a website and are part of the listserv so we can make sure people do know about the amazing work that you all are doing. We, it's a partnership. We, we can't do this alone, and I really appreciate, DeWorren, you bringing this important proclamation to us every year and having the opportunity to showcase what the amazing things that you all are doing for our youth here in Durham. And, you know, we know the power of mentorship, and that's, you know, there's been studies that shown with looking at ACES and resilience, the importance of having one caring person in a child or youth's life, the difference that that can make. So thank you to all of you for, for what you, what you are doing for people in our community.
Thank you all so much. That, Commissioner Howerton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question. I'd like to know if, and thank you all for your presentations tonight and letting us know and letting the community know the work that you're doing. There's some wondering, and DeWorren, maybe you can answer it. There were several groups that came before us for the American Rescue Dollars, or any of these organizations connected to any of the organizations that we've supported with dollars, you know?
Well, just to be clear on your question, are you asking, did these organizations receive funding?
Are they connected to any of the organizations that did receive money?
Are you all connected to any of the organizations that received funding? As you see, that many of them said no, and we apply.
Okay, great. So if you're not, it would be good to go on the website and see the different organizations that are there so that you can connect.
Okay, thank you. I'll be sure to share that. And just so you all know, Ms. Claudia Hager would be a good point of contact for you all to reach out to, to find out what organizations were funded and which ones you could potentially work with. But I'll be sure to share that information via email. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next item, which is the resolution celebrating and honoring the life and service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I will ask Vice Chair Burns to read this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Durham County Board of County Commissioners Resolution, celebrating and honoring the life and service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a tireless advocate for nonviolence and justice, dedicated his life to fortifying the essence of the American character, tirelessly championing the civil rights of all citizens, and imparting invaluable lessons on courage, overcoming fear, love transforming hate, acceptance dispelling prejudice, and mutual regard for extinguishing iniquity. And whereas, in the face of adversity and violence, Dr. King ardently preached the doctrine of nonviolence and civil disobedience to combat segregation, discrimination, and racial injustice, firmly believing in humanity's moral capacity to care for one another. And whereas, Dr. King played a pivotal role in the successful 381-day Montgomery Bus Boycott in 1955, protesting the arrest of Rosa Parks and the segregation of the bus system. And whereas, Dr. King helped found and served as the first president of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference in 1957 to coordinate and support nonviolent direct action as a method for desegregating bus systems across the South. And whereas, between 1960 and 1964, Dr. King delivered impassioned speeches to Durham, advocating civil disobedience and nonviolent protests to dismantle racial segregation and discrimination at various times, including White Rock Baptist Church, the Durham Business and Professional Chain, Hillside High School, the Southern Political Science Association at Jacktar Hotel, North Carolina College, which is now referred to as North Carolina Central University, and Duke University. Whereas, Dr. King's extensive travels encompassing over 6 million miles, more than 2,500 speeches, and the authorship of five books and numerous articles showcased his unwavering support for nationwide efforts to combat injustice, drive social change, and promote desegregation from 1957 to 1958. Whereas, on August 28, 1963, Dr. King led the historic March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, the largest rally of civil rights movement, delivering his iconic "I Have a Dream" speech from the steps of the Lincoln Memorial before a crowd exceeding 200,000 people, calling for the end to racism and advocating for the civil and economic rights of African Americans. And whereas, the March on Washington played a pivotal role in the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 prohibiting discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin, and outlawing unequal application of voter registration requirements, as well as racial segregation in schools, employment, and public accommodations. And whereas, Dr. King orchestrated the instrumental and inspirational Selma to Montgomery marches in 1965, advocating for the enactment of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 to secure the right to vote for African-American citizens. And whereas, Dr. King, while supporting Memphis, Tennessee garbage workers and planning the Poor People's Campaign to Champion Economic Justice, was tragically assassinated on April 4th, 1968. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Durham Board of County Commissioners hereby acknowledges and honors the life and contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King and commits to improving the human condition for all through the adoption of racial equity framework, fostering quality education, affordable housing, equal opportunity, shared prosperity, living wage employment, safe and humane labor conditions, and quality healthcare and governmental decision-making. Be it therefore resolved that the Durham Board of County Commissioners calls on all of its residents in Durham County to join in reflecting on and advancing Dr. King's legacy and realizing his dream this eighth day of January 2024.
And we'll call DeWorren Langley.
Thank you again. I have the wonderful privilege of serving as the vice chair of the Durham Community Martin Luther King Jr. Steering Committee, and we are a community-based organization committed to preserving the legacy and work of Dr. Martin Luther King, and we do this by hosting appropriate programs and ceremonies throughout the holiday ceremonies. So this year, we're going to be having, the first event will be the Interfaith Prayer Breakfast, which will be held at the Sheraton Imperial Hotel. Hopefully, you all will be able to attend, and the speaker will be the Reverend Sade Wilson. Then we will have our march, our Unity March and Rally, which will begin at the Tower at M. Then we will have our Unity March and Rally, which will begin at the Tower at Mutual Plaza, 411 West Chapel Hill Street, beginning at 10:30. And we'll proceed down to First Presbyterian Church at 305 East Main Street. And the rally will begin immediately following the march. Then we will have a volunteer event with the Durham Partnership for Children, where they'll be collecting children books, new children books, which can be donated at 1201 South Briggs Avenue between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And we will conclude with our annual religious service with keynote speaker, Dr. Kimberly D. Moore. She is the senior pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church. We are being graciously hosted at Ebenezer Missionary Baptist Church, where Cornelius E. Battle, Senior, is the pastor. That's going to be located at 2200 South Austin Avenue here in Durham, and it'll begin at 6:00 p.m. At that ceremony, we'll be giving out academic scholarships to deserving students here in Durham of $1,000, as well as our annual Keeper of the Dream Award, which will go to one individual and one organization that has exemplified the work and life of Dr. King. So thank you all. Hope residents in our community, as well as our commissioners, can join us. Thank you for this resolution.
Thank you much. Thank you so much, as always, DeWorren, again, for bringing us two great proclamations and for your service as Vice Chair of the MLK Junior Committee here in Durham. I really look forward to participating in some of these events, and I encourage our community members to also join in honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Do we have any other? Commissioner Howerton?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. And, DeWorren, thank you for bringing this to us. And honoring Martin Luther King's birthday is too full for me. And it's too full because I get to honor an incredible man that brought so much to this country, but I also grieve my son. My son was murdered on Martin Luther King's birthday at Hampton University. So it's always too full for me. It's a celebration of two kinds. But what I want to lift up tonight is that there is a scholarship in his honor at Hampton University. So there is more money available in honoring him through Hampton University for students that live in Durham. It was anywhere in North Carolina, I think, the way it was stated, for students. So if any students that's hearing it, that can apply at Hampton University for the scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howerton. Vice Chair Burns?
Commissioner Carter, because it was on.
It is on.
Yeah, and that's why I was waiting.
I'm happy to say something, but I'm also happy to wait.
Well, I will be very quick. And so, DeWorren, you did, there's two breakfasts. There's, of course, the one that's centered here in Durham, and then there's the Interfaith one. And I didn't hear a date. So that's the one that's centered here in Durham, correct?
Is it only one?
That's what I was thinking. Okay, yeah, so when you, they had, because they say Interfaith, and then you put a name. Okay, so perfect. And I know that we're going to amplify that one. So I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't hear Sheraton, so thank you. And he didn't say the time, but y'all do know the door's open at 6:00 a.m. And it does fill up rather quickly. The only thing that I would say, I can't, I always like to say two things about MLK, that it's not a day off, it's a day on. There's a reason why we have all these events. People are like, "Oh, I can take my time off." That's not what the day is for. It's the opportunity to kind of reflect on the quotes. And I would just advise people, you know, he gave many speeches, and we always like to go to the one, we always like to go to the March on Washington. Look at what he was writing beforehand. Look at what he was writing in the '50s. Look at what he was writing about the Poor People's Movement, you know, in the late '60s, right before he was assassinated, because he did not pass. And I think just a breadth of his work, I'm going to mess the quote up. He was like, you know, "There are times when we do things for expediencies, we do things that are political." He was like, "But there's a point in our life where we have to do things, not because they're expedient or because they're political, but because our conscience causes us to do so." So I would just encourage everybody, you know, take some time, even if you don't do anything else, just read up on what he cared about. Because I think we focused on the African-American piece, but it was really about the working people, fair wages, full employment, and support. And I'm happy that whoever was the author wrote about the connections to Durham. And I'll end here. If you Google his name right now, like the first folder that pops up, he's marching and he's holding Floyd McKissick's dad's hand. Like Senator McKissick looks like his dad, you can very clearly see. And then if you ever have a conversation with Senator Representative Dean Mickey Michelle, I was at the law school the other day, and he was talking to some kids, and he just kept saying Martin and kept saying Martin. And the kids finally said, "Is he talking about Martin Luther King?" Yes, Martin Luther King was in his house, like he can talk about him in the first person. So there are these great collaborations and connections here at Durham. And I'm just hoping, if you don't do anything else, just take some time to kind of sort of sit with his speeches and humble yourselves like I'm going to do, because I have to be humbled every now and then, and think about how we're going to move forward next year and do some things that would have made this man proud and make his assassination not in vain.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burns. Commissioner Carter?
I just quickly want to thank the Steering Committee. You really have a legacy of organizing great events and giving away really meaningful scholarships. I can remember in the past, listening to the description of the students' works and their background as they receive their scholarships, and it was always so very impressive. Thank you for the work that you do. And I agree with Commissioner Burns about Dr. King's amazing oratory ability. Oh, my God, probably the best speechmaker of all time. And from the pulpit to the podium to the streets, he worked tirelessly for the beloved community in the same way that the mentoring leaders who showed up today are working, showing care for our beloved community. And this board continues to do that work as well, as we really strive to embed equity and opportunity in all of our policy decisions and in all of our investments and all of our programs in Durham County. Looking forward to the day on and hope that some of us can be together during the celebration.
Thank you, Commissioner Carter. Thank you so much again, DeWorren, and to the entire Steering Committee for bringing this item, this resolution to us and giving us this opportunity to recognize the great service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. With that, that brings us to our, that's the conclusion of our ceremonial items, and bringing us to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is items that the board has reviewed and discussed at our work sessions and have had an opportunity to have deep conversation with staff, asking them questions, especially clarifying questions and learning more about the different ways they'll be impacting the community. Are there any questions, comments, or items that would like to be pulled from the consent agenda? Then I will move for approval of the consent.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we can approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
A move by Vice Chair Burns, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs, for approval of consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. The consent agenda is approved. Now, this brings us to our public hearing portion of the agenda. The first item will be the public hearing for Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Tier Quarry TC 230003. And the board is requested to conduct a public hearing on the proposed UDO text amendment, and if appropriate, based on the comments received during the hearing, adopt the appropriate statement of consistency and approve the amendment and consider the following motions. So I'll call forward Alexander Cahill, Senior Planning Director, and Sarah Young. Well, oh, sorry.
Alexander's ill this evening, so I'm filling in for him as best I can.
Wonderful.
Aaron Kane with the Planning Department, Chair Alum, Vice Chair Burns, and honorable commissioners. I'm happy to be with you before you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law. And affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. As you mentioned, Chair Alum, yeah, this item is Tier Quarry intake. The Tier Quarry text amendment is a staff-initiated amendment to the UDO, required per state watershed regulations, which proposes changes to Article IV zoning districts, Article VIII environmental protection, and Article XII infrastructure and public improvements of the Unified Development Ordinance. The purpose of this amendment is to protect a critical water supply resource for Durham as a new intake structure will be constructed to withdraw water from the Eno River into the quarry. The new intake will create a new watershed overlay classification that will be applied to properties near the new intake. This amendment to the UDO creates a new watershed overlay district, the Eno River District A2, or EA2 as abbreviated. This overlay district will be applied to properties within a half mile of the new intake and will change the overlay from protected EB to critical EA2. While the properties in the overlay will change to the critical designation, properties will be subject to the overlay rules at the time a lot was created. The new rules would only apply if any properties are redeveloped in the future. There we go. This map shows the existing watershed overlay boundaries and where the new EA2 will be applied within a half mile of the new intake structure to protect the drinking water supply. Here we go. This table shows the regulations that apply to existing watershed overlay districts and the new EA2 district. The regulations that apply to the EA critical watershed overlay will be the same regulations that will apply to the new EA2. And while the new Eno River Critical District A and Eno River Critical District EA2 both have the same regulations, the difference is that the two, for the two, is that the map district for EA will be one mile, will remain one mile, while the EA2 distance will be a half mile from the water intake. With that, our planning staff is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. You did a great job standing in for Mr. Cahill. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from board members? Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Aaron. So there was a map that was in our agenda materials for this item, and I just was trying to understand if you could really translate for us what the, you know, what the impact will be to residents. And also, I didn't know, you know, are these just platted lots or have the lots already been developed? So, you know, just trying to understand exactly what this means for residents.
For existing residents, they should not see any changes based on this because the new rules, the new watershed overlay rules, the new impervious surface restrictions would not take place unless this area was redeveloped. The vast majority of this area is already developed as single-family residential. We don't expect that to change anytime soon. But we were required by the state, because of the new intake, to apply a critical watershed overlay to this area, but are able to lessen the impacts by not having it applied to existing plots of record.
Okay, that's great to know, and I think that's important for residents to know. How will we inform them about this change and that fact that existing development will not be impacted?
So I know there's been at least one, if not more, neighborhood meetings that took place with residents to inform them. We did notify all of the residents that these changes were coming through. We've been answering questions as they've been coming in from individual residences in addition to the neighborhood meeting that took place. And as well, since these areas are already in the city, they are getting notification for the city council action that will take place next week to actually apply the new watershed overlay district regulations.
Okay.
I'm sorry, in addition, this already has been through Planning Commission, and so notification would have gone to all these residences as part of that as well.
Great, thank you. My last question is, in terms of this being a future water supply for the city, the Tier Quarry, do you have any information about when that is expected to actually happen?
I don't know.
Good evening, Commissioner Sarah Young with the Planning Department. We don't have that information, but I believe Sid Miller with the Water Management Department is on the Zoom, maybe, and might be able to answer that for us, if we can bring him up.
He is. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So first, this quarry was used as an emergency water supply back in 2007. So it has been used. That was during that extreme drought at the end of 2007. Right now, we're finishing up a preliminary engineering report for the project. And then sometime later this year, it will move into a design phase and then construction. So we're probably looking at about three to four years before water is used from the quarry and water is withdrawn from the Eno River to put into the quarry.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much for being here with us. And is the purpose in the future going to be similar, that it is for an emergency source of water?
Once we have permanent infrastructure in the quarry, it'll be used more regularly, probably every two years or so in order to supplement our existing supplies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner Jacobs, regarding your earlier question, I got a note from Alexander that there were two neighborhood meetings held, not just one, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Sidney, for joining. Also, if Alexander is sick, why is he tuned in? He should be resting.
I agree, but he's dedicated. What can I say?
Okay, any more questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay, with that, I will open up the public hearing for this agenda item, for the UDO text amendment for Tier Quarry. We did not have anyone sign up to speak on this item, either in person or virtually. So with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a final opportunity for questions or comments. With that, then, we have before us a statement of consistency as well as, yeah, that needs to be adopted. So I will entertain these. Do we adopt both? Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article IV zoning districts, Article VIII environmental protection, and Article XII infrastructure and public improvements. Second.
Move by Commissioner Jacobs, seconded by Vice Chair Burns. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The adoption of the ordinance passes. That moves us to the second motion.
Okay, second motion, I make a motion to adopt consistency statement as acquired by North Carolina General Statute 160D-605.
Second.
Move by Vice Chair Burns, seconded by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero, to adopt the consistency statement. Thank you so much. That moves us on to our second public hearing for the night. Agenda item 24- Agenda item 24-0012, public hearing, the street closing request to permanently close a 1,112 linear foot portion of Electra Road, 1,168 linear foot portion of a 30 lane between Exum and Redwoods Road, and all of Exum Road.
Evening Board of Accounting, sorry. Evening Board of Account and Commissioners, the request to permanently close a 694 linear foot portion of Exum Road, a 1,112 linear foot portion of Electra Road, and a 1,168 linear foot portion of a 30-foot lane between Electra Road and Redwood Road. Case number SC2200008 refers to a request by Jose Torres on behalf of Durham County to permanently close the aforementioned portions of Exum Road, Electra Road, and the 30-foot lane. Jose Torres on behalf of Durham County requests the permanent closure of Exum Road running south from Electra Road, portions of Electra Road running southwest from Redwood Road, and portions of a 30-foot lane between Redwood and Exum Roads running south from Redwood Road. 1,112 linear foot county-maintained section of Electra Road is currently only utilized for access to county-owned property as proposed for permanent closure. The 1,168 linear foot portion of 30-foot wide lane is unimproved, and the 694 linear foot portion of Exum Road is unimproved, and both are proposed for permanent closure. All adjacent parcels are owned by Durham County. The portion of the right-of-way is presently open but not maintained by the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and if closed, the right-of-way would be recombined with the adjacent county-owned properties. Planning staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And I just want to make sure we address you properly. You're Keegan, right?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Keegan. We have any questions or comments from commissioners regarding this item? Commissioner Howerton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question. What is, what, I guess, what I couldn't figure out from the information was what's the impact of closing this road?
Was there, what's the impact?
So the right-of-way proposed for closure only border county-owned parcels, and as part of the closure, all of those parcels would be recombined, including that right-of-way land, into a single parcel which would then be available for development. There is a site plan application that is under review now that has holding comments from that case planner. It's not a case I'm reviewing, but has holding comments from that case planner regarding not being able to approve the site plan until the street closing, as well as I think a minor specialty use permit, is approved. But specific to the scope of the street closing, it would just be a matter of being able to redevelop the single parcel.
All right, thank you.
And what would be the size of that parcel once it's combined?
Doesn't crash, I can check on that. Very convenient time for computer, please.
Good evening. Jessica Dockery of the Planning Department. While Keegan's looking that up, I just wanted to give a little more information about the purpose of the recombination. So this county property is actually the sheriff's firing range for practicing, and by combining those parcels that are currently divided up and have those streets, it provides a more permanent buffer. They're going to be extending somewhat toward the north, which is where this is going to be all combined, and so that buffer becomes greater, a little safer for the neighbors so that, since they're firing towards them.
Thank you. The total area of the recombined lot would be about 90.2 acres. 90.2.
And so the plan or like the application that's pending this decision, is that a develop, like a housing development project, or is that a?
Leave its, revisions to the existing use that's there, the existing Durham County firing range, other, like supplemental development for that county property for the firing range.
So it's not like we're building this buffer and then building more houses within that buffer? So there is, the firing range is there currently, and they are going to try to bring it up to a little safer conditions and also expand.
I'm sorry, could somebody move them? I'm having trouble hearing everyone, so.
There is a firing range there currently under use, and this is going to allow it to be a little safer, but also they can expand it so that it is more useful.
And that's what that pending application is?
Yes, yes, it's for the expansion of a current use.
Thank you. Are there any questions or other comments? Commissioner Carter?
Are all of these changes related to this one project? Are these, I don't know, I just have trouble following the narrative. I understand the one we've just been talking about, but the other parts where we're closing a portion of the road or a lane, is that, are these all connected or? Yes, okay. The motivation is all the same for all of them, okay.
Electra, Exum, and the 30-foot lane are all connected and would all be recombined into the same parcel following the closure.
Got it, thank you.
I see another hand, so with that, I will open up the public hearing, and we have one speaker signed up to speak, Ms. Wanda Allen. If you can come up to where Monica, our clerk, is, and you'll have three minutes to speak, please introduce yourself and give us your address.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year, and glad to see you guys again, and I truly do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. You did address some of my questions because when I reviewed the documents, it wasn't very clear, but I still have a question that I need for the county commissioners to answer. So you have in front of you, Monica and I tried to work technology, but it didn't work, so we came up with another plan. I have asked her to pass out in front of you a map that is on your website that has identified a algae scrubber. It's number 15, if you look at that. And my question to you guys is really straight and forward. Are we closing off this area with the potential of using some of this space for the algae scrubber? That's my question. The data shows that we have already funded, Durham has already funded $10 million of our tax dollars to fund an algae scrubber. And we all, as citizens in Durham, want to know, what are we doing with closing these roads off? It is a potential site that that algae scrubber could be put there. So, and the questions that I have, if the algae scrubber is so great, then why isn't there more down the east coast? I know this is surprising to you guys because you guys know my background. I work for the federal government, I work with U S E P A, so I do care, and I am very serious about Falls Lake, but I know the algae scrubber is not the solution, okay? So, and if the algae scrubbers were that effective, there would be more. Florida has two, and they have not corrected Florida's problems. So, and as one of the research, you have it on your website, as in one of the documents that the researchers have stated, the reason the algae scrubber is not that effective is like taking a thimble and trying to clean up Falls Lake. So we also know that Falls Lake's water is allocated to Raleigh, and part of that process of using an algae scrubber is that you lose water and it is also evaporated. So we now know that algae scrubber can treat six tons, but we know that we're producing about 26 tons from Falls Lake. So we, as the citizens, really want to know what is all this land going to be used for? I heard you tonight, or heard someone tonight say that it's going to be extended to add more buffer for the citizens for driving range, but we want to know, is any of this going to be used for the algae scrubber? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda. Staff, do you want to respond or answer me?
If this was?
Before we close it?
If this was related to the algae scrubber, would there have been something in our materials about an algae scrubber?
Not with respect to the street closing. The street closing would just be regarding the closure of the right-of-way and the recombination of that right-of-way area into adjacent parcels.
And if it were related to an algae scrubber and we were asking what the motivation for these changes were, you probably would have told us something about an algae scrubber in addition to or instead of a sheriff's firing range?
Yeah, applicant, application materials for street closing does require some mention of what is intended for that space, but it was more broadly speaking about redevelopment and in the context of that existing site plan application that is specific to the firing range.
No algae scrubber?
But there does not appear to be any sort of reference to an algae scrubber in the site plan application materials, and there was not any reference to the algae scrubber in the street closing application materials.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. I just want to get clear on something. Durham County is the applicant for this, correct?
Yeah, the application was submitted by Jose Torres on behalf of Durham County.
Okay, so Jose, I think you could probably help if we could, if you could maybe talk about, since we are the applicant, you know, in these circumstances, we often will ask whoever the property owner is to explain what is, what is the purpose, as you were just saying, Commissioner Carter. I think it would help to get clarity that this is just, because there's some confusion, this does not involve an algae scrubber, you know, that, that this is definitively for a sheriff's firing range.
Did you mean Julio?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Jose.
Oh, God, I'm so sorry. My apologies for that, Julio. It would just be good to get, since we are the applicant, what is the purpose of these road closings?
Good evening, Happy New Year. Julio Delgado, ACM, I've been called names, neighbor Jose Torres. I need to find out when the gentleman says the applicant. Right, Jose, is it Jose Torres? Yeah, I don't know who Jose Torres is.
Yes, my apologies on that.
I need to do some research because I'm not aware of the algae scrubber, so I really apologize, but I'm lost on this one.
I appreciate you doing that research to bring back to us.
The applicant didn't follow up in your portfolio, it sounds like.
Well, that's correct. I need to get with Perry and Jay to see if this was brought up. I know we are talking about expanding the firing range for the sheriff that's been in the works, but I never heard the other side. I need to figure out, you know, with the gentleman here, who is, who is the person that he has been talking to, because Jose Torres doesn't ring a bell on my side.
I do.
Well, I really have no idea on that.
To keep us on track of this item since, oh, manage yourself? I was going to say, since staff has mentioned to us that it's not related to the algae scrubber, if we can have that question directed to staff to respond to us via email of a description of what is algae scrubber, so we can get that, but to keep us on the focus of what staff has informed us the purpose of this closure is for. I see Sarah Young stepping up.
And I did just want to throw in, one, thank y'all for who, everybody following the friend, but we have maps, and along with what Commissioner Carter said, the case area that we're discussing, and could you throw this in there also, Madam Director, the case area does not even extend to the water. So I do just want to, I've looked at the maps, the case area that we're talking about doesn't even extend to the water or the algae scrubber, so I'll let you do your thing, but I did want to elevate that for everyone in this room, but.
All right, I looked up, Commissioners, I looked up real quick, because this is the first that planning staff has heard about any sort of algae scrubber. So I educated myself via Google very quickly. An algae scrubber is a water filtering device which uses light to grow algae in the process. Undesirable chemicals are removed from the water. So that's a very short version of what an algae scrubber is, but again, we have no knowledge. This is the first we've heard of anything related to that. It's not related to what was told to us the reason for the case is, if that helps.
Thank you for that. I am going to call for, or close the public hearing and formally bring it back to our board for discussion. I know we jumped ahead of ourselves a little bit, and see if there's any further questions or comments now that the public hearing is closed from commissioners.
I think the algae scrubber is the city's property too, anyway, sorry.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I'd just like to make a motion if we are ready.
If there's no other questions or comments, then yes.
I'd like to make a motion to permanently close a 1,112 linear foot portion of Electra Road, a 1,168 linear foot portion of a 30-foot wide lane between Redwood and Exum Roads, and, excuse me, all of Exum Road.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jacobs, seconded by Commissioner Howerton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, five to zero. Thank you so much, Keegan.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our public hearing portion of the agenda. No items were pulled from consent agenda, so we will move to our final item, which is a closed session. The board is requested to adjourn into closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial appointment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Moved by Vice Chair Burns, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Have a safe drive home, and please stay safe in the inclement weather we're expecting tomorrow.
Yes. Okay, good evening again. Uh we have come out of closed session. No action was taken. Um and with that, I will call for an adjournment.
Good night.
Good night.